All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order if everyone would please stand and for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening to everyone. On February, January has flown by. It'll be Christmas before we know it. All right, everyone on the board has had a chance to, we've got several, we've got November, December, and January minutes that we're going to approve tonight. For our November minutes, what we're going to do, which we'll do first, Jamie and Eric sent y'all were not on the board at that time, and Rachel, Jamie, you had mentioned that to Rachel, so just the board members that were duly elected members on the board at that time, I'll ask you for your vote on the November minutes. So everybody's had a chance to review those. Need a motion to approve the November minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. If Jamie and Eric, y'all can join in on the December minutes, need a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the January minutes?
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Moving on to our closed session minutes. And this will be for...
Only November.
Say that again, Rachel.
Only November.
Only November. Yep, you had mentioned that to me. So this is only going to be, closed session will be only for November, so again, Jamie and Eric, I ask y'all not to vote. If there's no changes that need to be made, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Yes, we do. First of all, if you look at item eight, the BOE calendar, we need to amend that or edit that. And that would be to add in Monday, March the sixth, at six o'clock PM, for a regular board meeting. That was omitted. And then there was a typo on March the twentieth for that special call board meeting for the work session. It said the thirtieth.
Say those again real quick.
Add Monday, and it is in your new one, on the original one that you were sent. It was incorrect. I'm sorry, but this one is correct.
It's correct on here?
It is correct.
Okay.
Monday, March sixth, and then Monday, March the twentieth are those two meetings, but they're correct on your paper.
All right.
And then also, um, hang on. Delete from seven point four, the following policies. Sixty-eight hundred, sixty-eight oh one, sixty-eight forty, and sixty-eight forty-one. Because we are not going to be removing those tonight, so therefore, we need to keep those in place.
Any other changes?
That is it.
Need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. We had a little snafu in good news tonight, so we're going to move right on through Agenda Item Two, on matters of the public. Don't think we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight, so with that, we'll move on to our superintendent's report, Agenda Item Three.
All right, good evening, everybody. We will start off Item three point one, the membership report, and you do have that in your packet where we have for the primary school at a plus two, elementary school at a plus three, the middle school a minus two, and the high school at a plus five, for a total of plus eight. That's always good. So Item three point two, an update on our advisory committee. We talked about the PAC meeting, and that's Parent Advisory Council. Those parents have been notified. There were twelve that were chosen for that from all schools, believe it or not. The high school had more applicants than any other school, which is very rare, and we were excited about that. And we'll have our first meeting with the Parent Advisory Council on February twenty-seventh at 1:00 PM. And just for your information, we're going to be alternating those, some during the day and some in the evening, to accommodate people that work. And for some of them, they want them during the day because it is, their kids are in school, so we're going to be alternating that. So just an update on that. Next, Item three point three. We've had a lot of inquiries and some from you guys about the new school. Not a lot has happened. There's been a lot with surveying and such going on, but we're going to have a meeting with the same group that met last time, and it was a group that visited the new school, as well as, we invited some additional teachers from the high school and middle school at our last meeting, where they gave some input, asked a lot of questions. So the architects have kind of revised what, based on what their needs were, or what their concerns were. So we're going to meet again on Wednesday, the twenty-second, at three thirty, and when I, when we meet in March, hopefully then I'll be able to bring more details to you as far as when things look like they might happen, maybe even share some plans with you, because all that's still just in the beginning stages, you know, nothing, you haven't missed anything because nothing's happened, to be honest. So that's where we are on that.
So, Ms. Jackson, do you have a tentative floor plan?
We do, but he's revised it, and we're going to show that to the committee on, on that day.
Okay.
Because one of the concerns that we had heard was that keeping them very separated, the middle school kids from the high school kids, so they, they've looked at that. And then, one of the other concerns, we've kind of been spoiled. While our buildings are old, the classrooms are large, and everybody has their own classroom. And the DPI standards for really looking at ADM and buildings as far as square footage for the amount of students you have, teachers would share classrooms in some cases, where if you're looking at, you know, and this is just an example, if you have five English teachers, you might have four classrooms, because every period, there's going to be an empty classroom. That was a concern of the high school teachers, of course it would be, and the administration as well, that they need a space. So they're not just kicked out of their classroom. They need a plan, and they need, having been a teacher, I can't agree more. So they've revisited some of those kinds of things and made a lot of changes. Bottom line is, it can't be any bigger than it is with the money we have, you know, until we can get some more money. This is the size building that we can build. All we can do is move things around on the inside. So I'll share that with you two at our next meeting, and after that, when I have those new plans, I'm happy for, to the board, if you want to come in at any time, schedule a time with me, and I'll show it to you.
So are you saying the meeting on the twenty-second will be with your committee, with your staff committee?
Yes.
And then you'll bring it to the board?
On the March board meeting.
Okay.
And if you want anything prior to that, that's fine. I talked to Rachel about asking if you guys could come to that meeting, and you know, she's real strict about those, because then that makes it an open meeting. I wanted to invite you to that. That was originally what my notes said, but she said, then it's an open meeting, so it's up to you. It has to be posted. It has to be, you know, all the things we do for this meeting. So, and I don't know that our, right now, we want our staff to really be invested and to talk, and they wouldn't sit here and do it. But they would in a regular afternoon meeting.
I looked at the padlet, and
Yes, good.
There were some, there were some good questions, some good comments on that. So that was very interesting. So if, if we wanted to come, maybe one at the time and talk with you about it, and just see what you, we could do that?
Yes, and matter of fact, I can take two or three at a time. Before we ever started this process, that's how we kind of got the ball rolling, was we did do that. We met two or three at a time, so that I could talk about, you know, my concerns, and this was actually after COVID, years after we really wanted to start this process. But absolutely, I'm happy to do that. Matter of fact, I'm even happy to do that prior to the twenty-second, but I really won't know a whole lot until then, so it might be better to wait till after that.
I, I would like to do that, just so that I have a little bit of knowledge. If somebody asks me something, I, you know,
Sure.
That I can answer some questions.
Sure.
Okay.
So if one of, one or two of us came to the meeting, would that consider?
Well, originally, you and Doc, Jean Dudley, I got to call you Dr. Dudley, you're welcome, and John, were invited to the original visit, so I would be okay if the three of them, as long as we don't have more than three. I would love it if the three of you could come, because that was the original ones, and then for different reasons, y'all couldn't come. But as long as we had no more than three, it's not an open meeting. I just want people to be able to ask questions and give their opinions and feel comfortable, and I think they, they would in a setting like that. I'll remind you. I'll send out a reminder. Any other questions about that? Okay, good. The Item three point four is an update on the School Resource Officers Grant. I will first say, thank you, thank you, thank you to those of you that were able to come or even able to speak to the commissioners prior to the meeting, where they did vote to put a resource officer in every single school, to the parents that came and the children that came. It was amazing. It really was. It was one of the best meetings I've attended, and just the best feeling when I left, other than it was one hundred and sixty-five degrees in that building. I think people that were there would agree, but anyway. So what's been happening since then, we've been taking, well, I say we, the Sheriff's Department's been taking applicants. They have four, they, he said he had five, but he says he's got four really good candidates that he is looking at right now, and thinks we'll have one at, at one of our schools by the end of this month. So I'm very excited about that, and then the others shortly after. I'm so excited, so excited about that, I just can't tell you.
I am too.
Thank you for everybody that did what we had to do to make that happen, and that was a collective effort of people in this room and people outside this room, too. So I'm just really, really pleased. It's something that we've needed for a really long time, so I'm very thankful for that. Any questions or comments? Item three point four is an update on Heartworks Transportation. I don't know how much, you want me to get into this right now, but I, I wanted to put this on the agenda because, or on the report, because you guys received a letter, or some of you did, I think, because you mentioned that you received a letter from Heartworks just letting us know that they needed, starting with the next school year, for us to provide transportation. And I did ask our transportation director to come. And just to give you a little bit of background, for those of you that haven't been here, you know, we had a, they have a Twenty-First Century grant that's going to expire at the end of this year, and through that grant, we did partner with them and did what we could to help them with transportation. Several years ago, we just saw that it wasn't practical anymore. We could not put those kids on our bus, because it meant releasing twenty minutes, fifteen or twenty minutes early, every single day, in order to make that happen. So there was a lot of discussion at our board meetings for months and months about that. So what we did do was, we gave them a bus, and they used that for a while, and then they ended up selling that bus. I'm not sure what happened with that. I think it wasn't working or whatever. We did the maintenance on it. We provided the gas to help them, but they just needed a driver. When they no longer had a bus to use, we did offer our bus, and that worked for a while. They were using our bus. They would, their driver would come to our transportation garage, get that bus, pick all their kids up, drop them off, and then would come back and get their car, which, which made it much better. We were able to extend our day at the primary school and elementary school fifteen, twenty minutes, which was very, very important. So they have been, they, they said they just don't have anyone that can drive a bus anymore, and so they're not going to do the transportation. They've been using their vans and cars, I think, trying to get kids. So that, like I said, that they're, after the Twenty-First Century grant runs out, you know, we don't offer transportation to daycares. Right now, we're in a pretty bad crunch, like all the other school districts in the state, with bus drivers. As a matter of fact, sorry, Lindsay, but I'm going to tell you, she drove a bus this morning, our transportation director, because we've got a lot of sickness going on, and we just, we don't have a lot of subs. So she was on a bus driving. Her TMS coordinator was monitoring on a bus, because we have rules we have to follow. And it was either that, or those kids got picked up after we dropped off one load of kids. So we didn't want that. So thank you, Lindsay, for doing that. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background and information on that. I mean, we real, it's just really not possible for us to, to provide transportation. We are willing to continue to provide one of our activity buses if they, all they got to do is have a driver. We will provide the maintenance, and we'll provide the fuel for that bus, if they can just get one of their people certified to drive a bus. And they had one, and she left, and I'm not saying it's easy, because we have our own issues with that. But anyway, so if you hear about that, that's what's happening with that.
So we are saying that we can give them a bus.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We are saying tonight that we are going to try to give them a bus if they can find a suitable driver.
Right, they, they will use our bus, yeah.
Or provide a bus.
We'll provide the bus for them to use, like we have been, like we have been doing. Yes, ma'am. We'll continue to do that. I mean, because those are our students. You know, absolutely, one hundred percent, those are our students. We, we get that. But the only way to make it work was to do what they had been doing for years and years and years, and that was to kind of shut the school down, let those kids get all, go on a couple of buses, then come back and get everybody else. But once you have four or five kids from every single classroom, I mean, instruction's over. And that was at the request of the administration at both of those schools, that they just said, we just feel like this is, you know, we really need to do something different. So we were able to still help them and work it out where we could, you know, help provide, you know, the maintenance, because, you know, those, that bus was our bus, and we, our guys knew how to work on it, so we, because that was an old bus that they had. But anyway, they, they got rid of that bus, and then we gave them a, we let them use our activity bus. And they did that until, I mean, even did it through COVID, I think.
Yeah, they, they did it through COVID, and then the person that was driving, the beginning of twenty-one, let me see, I've got it. Their driver. So the beginning of twenty-one, twenty-two school year is when they started driving their minibus and van, because they didn't have anybody to drive our activity bus. So, like Ms. Jackson said, we kept the maintenance up on the other bus as well, and on the one that they were using of ours. So it's just the, the concept of, they just need a driver, because physically, we don't have anybody.
So I got a question. I like the, I like that we're still trying to compromise and provide a bus. Would it be possible for us to advertise a position just for that? They wouldn't have to pick up in the morning, so they wouldn't have to get up, but you're literally talking at the most an hour that they would have to work. If they're not willing to, or not, I don't want to say not willing, if, if they're not able to provide a driver. Is that something that we can still do?
You mean, a bus driver?
Somebody might be willing to, somebody might be willing to take that position, because they're not having to get up so early, pick up kids.
Because we do have advertised for just bus drivers for us, too. Um, my understanding is that they have tried. I mean, because that would be their employee. I mean, they would be on our insurance. Obviously, they would have to be on our insurance. I mean, certainly, we could, but then do they pay them, or do we pay them? Because we don't pay their employees.
What I'm saying is, could we, that be our employee? That'd be a special job just for somebody. It's, it's, it would be so short-term and so small of a duty, that maybe somebody would be more willing to take that than a regular bus, bus driver position. I'm just trying to throw it out, an idea to see.
It's something we can, we can think about. I just don't, I don't know. We, we are having such a hard time getting people that want to get licensed. So I, I don't know, even people that aren't employees, we put that out there, where it's additional money to be just. So I mean, we can, we can work with them. We, I mean, we're trying. We feel like we are trying to help them, but...
I have a question. So let's, the worst-case scenario is that neither can find a bus driver. And it's my understanding that the younger-aged children, if they're bussed home and there's no adult in place, they, they have to bring them back to the school. What, I mean, is there a contingency plan in case that happens? Because we're, we're going to be responsible for watching children until parents get off, get off, or?
Actually, we're not. That's, that's illegal. I mean, we, kindergarten through third grade, we do, out of courtesy, we don't, we wouldn't want to drop those kids off. But it's the parents' responsibility once they step off that bus, but we don't allow them to, because it's a safety thing for us. But when they come back, we have a whole set of procedures and rules, and if that happens very often, then they are, they can't ride the bus anymore. I mean, we have to, because it, it, at one point, it did happen often.
And, and also, it's up to parents to determine when their child is old enough to stay by themselves, for the most part.
So currently, are they still using their minivan, or?
Yes.
Yes, so they're using the minivan, the minibus they have, and then they have like a gold color, older Chevrolet van they're picking up.
And they're going to discontinue that when their grant money runs out because of funding, correct?
Well, it said funding, but what I don't understand is, our suggestion for transportation doesn't cost them anything, except that employee, which they already have employees anyway. So if one of them could get licensed, then transportation wouldn't cost them anything. Because you're right, Mr. Smith, it's not a lot of time. It's literally just going to the two schools and dropping them off and coming right back.
And I see where you're going, but who, that'll be what, so five hours a week?
Not even, not even.
Not even, yeah, so I'm just like.
But we certainly, we, we, I mean, like I said, these are our children, so we certainly want to help. But, you know, we, I mean, like I said, Lindsay drove a bus today, because we just really are, are short. And, and she asked me, like, what happens if something happens and I'm on a bus? You know, then, you know, I said, then we, we got to come up with a backup plan. If you're on a bus and something happens with another bus, you know, we've got somebody else that would go to that accident or whatever. I mean, and we're having to do that. I mean, there's people in this room that taught classes last week. There's people in this room that aren't teachers. There's people in this room that were administrators in school buildings last week that aren't school administrators anymore, because sometimes you got to do. So we're willing, we're willing.
Has it been relayed to them what we're capable of doing, or is just?
Yeah.
This discussion has been going on for quite some time, yeah.
But since the grant, you know, since they said it, since they brought the memo to the table?
Not yet. They, they said there was an April. They just want to know by April something is in that letter, if there was going to be, if we were going to be, April first, if we were going to be able to provide transportation. And what I'm saying is, we cannot provide transportation. We can provide a vehicle. But I, I would love nothing more than tomorrow, Shakira Robinson gets sixteen applications for bus drivers, and we're able to, to help them with that. I would love to be able to do that. We just don't have the people. So I, before I even said anything to them, you know, and, and Mr. Lee, you know, he's heard it from us a lot of times. We want to help. I love what they do. I love it. It's a service that our community needs greatly. But what we're offering, would it cost them any money? So the funding part, I'm sure it has something to do with Twenty-First Century, but what we're offering, only just the person.
And just to back up a little bit, we, we had the sign on with them before as part of the grant.
Yes.
And transportation was part of that. So the grant's coming to an end. And Lisa did mention, we, we don't provide transportation to daycares after school or, you know, other things. But, but we did partner with them on this grant to help make that happen.
Because there are other daycares in the county that would also like to have transportation, but they, they have vans or minibuses, and they do, they would, just, just so you know, if we open that can of worms up,
Yeah.
there's, there's more of them. Luckily, I, I mean, I haven't offered them a bus either, but...
I was going to ask, how much does it cost to train a bus driver, but we're having issues finding bus drivers. They're going to have an issue finding the bus driver, so really, it's your, your...
What we were hoping is they have after-school staff. If one of their staff members would just get a license.
What does it cost to train a bus driver?
The class is free.
Right.
They have to have a DOT medical, which could cost about a hundred dollars for that. Of course, they have to be drug tested, and that could be done, however late we did that. And then their permit is seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents, so they have to hold that permit for fourteen days, and then they can do behind-the-wheel training. But right now, they're technically two to three months behind doing behind-wheel training due to COVID and all that. Then, once they get their full license, it's around ninety dollars.
Because it would be cheaper probably than to hire somebody five hours a week. Pay for that change, pay for that training, but we can't, we can't have that open-ended, because we could train somebody. Pay to train somebody, one of their employees there, and then they quit in a week, and then there's, we got another one now. So we'd have to have some limitations on that.
That happens a lot.
Mr. McCarter?
Well, the, the people who are benefiting from the after-school program are the children. And I would like to, I, I think we all would like to see the program be successful for the children. So whatever it takes, there should be some way to work, work around the, the process. If it doesn't work going one route, let's take a look at another route to see what we can do to make it, make it work, because it will be to the benefit of the children.
So good comment. So if, if the current plan or current timing of it makes us, or if we did it, we would lose fifteen or twenty minutes of instruction? Can Heartworks adjust their time, so then we release at normal time, and then we could take the kids there? And that way, it's not affecting, let them make the time adjustment, not us.
That means our buses still can't, wouldn't leave until fifteen or twenty minutes later. They're still going to be, our kids are now going to be leaving fifteen or twenty minutes later. Is that what you were going to say?
So we've als, one of the other pieces to this is, we also offered to let our bus go last, right? So keep the Heartworks students at our campus until we ran the routes, and then like the first driver back would pick them up and take them to Heartworks. But that requires staffing, too. You have to have somebody to stay there in the gym or the media center, what have you. And teachers, that's when we have our meetings after school and things. So it's the staffing, and we even asked them at one point, could you send a staff member over, you know, could you send staff members over to sit with the Heartworks students until a bus could come back and get them? And they weren't equipped to do that at that time. So we really have tried to look at running the routes both ways.
Have we?
We've been doing, I mean, like you said, it's been years we've been doing this, too.
Well, and that's why I was going to say, I mean, we're, we're reflecting on what's happened in the past. Have we sat down with? Um, have we sat down with them to have this conversation to see if things have changed? That, um, some of the things that couldn't happen in the past can happen now.
But we know our situation hasn't changed. About, the, the only way to do it was to release those kids early.
But, um, and I understand that, but, but I'm saying, uh, we said that, you know, you asked them, can they come and, and send a staff member over? And, um, you know, various things. Um, uh, um, the situation here hasn't changed, but have we had a conversation to see if they can now do something that they couldn't once do?
Not since this letter, you guys just got this letter and before I talked to them, I wanted to talk to you.
So I was going to ask, so when do they need the decision or when are they asking?
April first, it's just, they just want to know if we're going to provide by April first, for next year.
So following in on what Jamie's saying, what I was going to ask is could we, um, you and some of the staff here maybe meet with them, talk about maybe some potential? How can they help, how can we adjust things? And then, we can bring it back up discussion at our March board meeting and hopefully make a decision before April. Is that, I'm, is that a possibility or? It's not, say.
And I mean, I think we, yeah, we can just say that our offer still stands, that we will provide the bus. You know, if you can get one of your employers certified, you know, we will still provide the fuel and the maintenance, just like before.
And as to questions, can they send a staff member over? Like what you're, what you're trying to do before.
What their situation is right now, I know in the last two weeks, we've gotten a call, probably after our school day has started to say that they were short staffed and they weren't going to be able to provide Heartworks that afternoon. So they're, they're in a crunch right now too, but I mean, certainly we could ask.
Is that a possibility or we can?
Absolutely.
Because we don't have to make a decision tonight, so we do have, we do have one more meeting before that April first. Is, is everybody okay with that? You okay with that, Jamie?
So is that, are we saying that we're going to meet with them to see?
Just asking Ms. Jackson and, and others here, or, you know, Lindsay, uh, Ms. Dixon, to meet and see. Put everything back on the table as to where, where we're at and maybe they can make some concessions or?
And then you're going to come back to the next board?
They'll, yeah, at the next board meeting, our March board meeting, we'll get an update on that. Are you okay with that, Ms. Robinson?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Mr. McCarter?
Yes, sir.
You're shaking your head. Kathy, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So will we have to have a new memorandum of understanding at the end of the year?
No.
Even if they don't have their grant, we won't have it on?
And so, no.
Okay.
Because this was for the grant.
Right, okay.
So funding wise, they're going to be? Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they're doing.
I'm wondering if that will have an impact on the services that they're able to provide, the number of students that they're able to serve at that point.
Probably so. So I can continue, all right, item three point six. Um, we have a municipal school transportation assistance traffic study for the primary school. Um, if you remember, a year or so ago, we had someone come and complain about, um, the traffic at pickup time at the primary school. So we have had several meetings with Department of Transportation to, um, to, um, see if there were some options. And we were very pleased, they came up with four or five different options and asked our opinion. Some would mean rerouting the traffic, might be adding another driveway. One of the big things was the traffic coming and going out of the same driveway at the primary school. So we had that meeting, they got some feedback from us and then they went back to the drawing board and they've asked for another meeting. Um, so we're going to be having another meeting with them, um, a little bit late, in, in a week or so, I can't remember. But I'll be very excited to bring you some information on that because the best part about it, which made Steve Curtis smile from ear to ear. It's not going to cost us, it's going to cost, it's not going to cost us anything. They're going to do this as a part of some grant money that they have, so very excited about that. And, and, and it may mean some, mean some changes with the way traffic is routed, so very excited.
That's great.
Yeah. So, I would like to recognize the two, twenty, um, twenty-two, um, North Carolina School Board Association board mem- um, board members that earned their recognition for participating in twelve to twenty-nine hours of training during the twenty-one, twenty-two, um, school year. And that was Mr. Paul Delamar, who was former board member, Ms. Kathy Delmar. Let's give her a round of applause. Mr. John Prescott, round of applause. And Ms. Helen Gibbs. We thank you guys for attending those meetings and watching those videos and all the stuff you had to do, so we appreciate that. And Tiffany, who should be back at the next board meeting, will have some more information on some things that you need to do to get trained, so. Alrighty, so I am so excited for these next two presentations that we decided to slide into the superintendent's report, we weren't really sure where to put them. If you have noticed, over the last two or three board meetings, we've tried to highlight something that, or someone that is not necessarily going to be making a presentation at the board meeting on a regular basis. Some of these people, you see them all the time. And I get questioned sometimes, like, what does Josh Gaskell, what's, what's his job? That's why we had him present, or what's Sean Carwin's job, CDC? Is that, you know, disease, what is that? So we had them come, love you Sean, remember his presentation was really long too. So, we decided that this week, or this month, that we were going to ask Elizabeth, and I'll let her tell you her fancy title. And Elizabeth Harwick is going to present. And then we had our football coach ask if he could come and talk to you about his program. So we're going to start with Elizabeth. So, Ms. Harwick, the floor is yours.
I'm a little nervous, you know, if you're nineteen and under, I can talk to you all day long. But being here, I'm going to try to take all the advice that I've had from everybody, you know, don't talk too fast. Don't talk too slow. Try to keep it under five minutes. You have to talk for at least ten minutes to make your point across. So I mean, there's just a multitude of things. But my name is Elizabeth Harwick. Um, I am the social media and graphic design coordinator for Pamlico County Schools. I wanted to share a few things about myself quickly with you, most of you know me, but in case you don't. I am a hurricane through and through. And by that, I mean, I am a recent graduate of Pamlico County High School. I don't know what the coughing's about, it might have been a few years. Um, but I do have two children, one that has graduated from Pamlico County High School and one that is going to graduate this year from Pamlico County High School. Um, I was fortunate enough to have some of you as my teachers coming up through the schools. And I was also equally fortunate enough to teach some of your children as I've gone through my educate, my education career here through Pamlico County Schools. Um, I have taught in all four schools. I taught, started as a teacher's assistant in Pamlico County Primary School. I taught many years as fourth grade at Brad Anderson, I taught STEM at Pamlico Middle and I taught digital design and animation at the high school level. So now, in my position, that I get to brag about all of my friends and my family and staff and faculty that I consider friends and family, um, in Pamlico County Schools, is probably my dream come true. So that being said, I want to share the media impact report with you. This is something that I, Sanio wouldn't find it, there he is, Mr. Rice. Um, this is something we kind of go through every month, just to see what our impact is. I've consolidated down to ninety days, so that way we can kind of, you can get a bigger chunk of it, since I don't speak to you that often. Um, we have three types of media presence. Of course, we have televised, as well as paper, print and social media. Now, when most of us were in school, the last media presence was not even considered, wasn't even thought about. Um, and now I can say that it's probably one of the most important that we have out there. In our area, we do have three major television, um, channels. We do have Thoughts Best affiliated to Channel Twelve. As you can see, in the past ninety days, we've had twenty-two mentions on Channel Twelve, sixteen mentions on Channel Seven and one mention on Channel, uh, Nine, which is appropriate. The farther you go away, the less they talk about us. The top three stories that we've had is the SRO grant funding, which I'm very appreciative that they've covered that, so they can understand the importance of it. The second one was schedule adjustment for, for Hurricane Ian, and then of course, the new school grant. I thought that would go above Ian, but school day, school time off is, you know, very much as well. Um, the print media reach. We are very fortunate that we have the Pamlico News here in Pamlico County. They are without a doubt, one of our greatest resources. They have approximately two thousand copies circulation per week, it is a once weekly, um, publication. Uh, and it is primarily within Pamlico County. Each school in our district is highlighted, highlighted once every six weeks. So even though there are two weeks in those six weeks that we do not have a specific spotlight on one of our schools, um, they do a fantastic job of covering our sporting events, any other kind of, um, highlighted events, recognitions that we have, they're always there, they always cover it for us. The New Bern Sun Journal is approximately nine thousand copies per day. But of course, that's, we're not as front and center for them, but it is something that we do tend to appear in from time to time. Uh, so we have the RAC cards. Some of you that have been around for a while can remember the trifolds that we used to have, and for each school, we used to have one. Some of the problems with that trifold is that it would list like principals, assistant principal, so on and so forth. And sometimes, as you know, those things can change at the drop of a hat, and so it becomes outdated. Um, I'm going to pass them out, just so you can kind of see them. Get some of my energy up.
Thank you.
But these are, uh, replacing those trifold brochures. We will put them throughout the community. They will especially appear at the, um, History Museum in Grantsboro, the Heritage Center, I guess. And, um, they're in every school, hopefully in the future, every school will have a RAC card too. But most importantly, I believe, is that they're taken to all of our recruitment fairs and job fairs that we go to. If you look on the front, of course, all of our schools are represented. But on the back, it's got the QR code. So now, instead of listing, um, the principals, superintendent, who's in charge, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If they scan this, it'll take them directly to the Pamlico County Schools website. And that is updated frequently. So that way, you don't have to worry about them getting outdated information, coming to look for somebody or making the phone call to the wrong person. Um, and of course, it gives them, you know, our Facebook and Twitter launches as well. We have two billboards, this is the previous one. It was up between Sept- um, September and January. It's in two locations, one's in Bridgeton, one's in Alliance, I think you've seen both of them. Um, the one in Bridgeton has fifty-four thousand weekly impressions and the one in Alliance has around thirty-seven thousand. And this is basically, it really is just keeping our name in the public, so that people know what we're doing. Uh, this is the current one that's out there, proud to feature our CTE, uh, program on the left. And then some, I believe, from the art at primary school. And you can see them up right now. I will tell you that it was one of the best feelings in the world. We had the billboards up, they had all the student athletes on it earlier. And you could drive by and you would see the parents taking pictures with their kids in front of the billboard. It was fantastic, it was fantastic. All right, um, another one of our print initiatives is that we've always, well, um, Coach Cook came to me several years ago and asked me to design the schedule for the football team. This year, Chris Davis came to me and said, I think baseball should get one too. Of course, of course, Sheriff Davis. And of course, the softball came after that. If you remember, many years ago, if you went to any of our restaurants around here, they would, you would see a copy of our schedule hanging up. And so, when our students go into these places, they know that they are being supported. They know that they are getting attention when they go in, they know that the community is behind them. We would like, I think the softball team has been proactive in putting some things out already. I know they've gave, they gave me a list, I think it's Charlie's, Hardison's, maybe Mayo's. Um, but hopefully in the future, you'll see more of our team sports getting out there. Of course, we have our five websites, one for each school. Um, thanks to Ms. Wendy White and Mr. Stephen Silverio. So, is it close?
Silvera.
Silvera, sorry. We do have Google Analytics on there now, so I'll be able to track what pages are often, are seen the most often. Um, and that comes in handy when we start looking at why, maybe why we're not getting traffic or information about this or that. Or why we're getting a lot of phone calls in regards to this or that. And then we can say, oh, it's because we didn't feature it on such and such. Um, now, so we're going to move into social media. We have a lot of social media, there are some that are supported by the district and some, um, by supported, I mean, is that I can push out the, the district message on it. And then there's some that have like classroom teachers, athletics and that kind of thing, that may not be something that is, um, seen as a representative of the district. Um, many, many years ago, Dr. Jeremy Johnson gave me my first chance with social media at Pamlico Middle School. And I don't think back then that we ever would have guessed that our social media presence would get to the point where almost every post is seen by three thousand people. And we have reached that point now, that, and it's not just Pamlico County. There are people that view us, that have moved from here, there, everywhere. We have people from Thailand and Italy, uh, families that check in with us. Whenever I speak to other public information officers or PR people from other districts, they say, your community only has twelve thousand people. How in the world do you get the engagement that you do? If you see, our reach for the past ninety days is eleven thousand people. So that's almost every person, if you think about it, in Pamlico County. And that is huge, because in a small community like ours, everyone believes, everyone shares the feeling that they are stockholders, stakeholders in our school system. They have somebody, their neighbor goes to the school. It's not a situation that, oh, their kid's gone, they delete social media for us and they move on. No, they're always interested, they're always supportive. And it's been a really, um, it's been a really powerful tool for us to keep them informed. If you look, this is the Pamlico County Schools District Facebook page, there have been sixty-two posts. We have about two thousand followers, which just means people that immediately get our posts. Um, engagement just means that people click on it so they can read it and eleven thousand total reach. So that means that people just, eleven thousand people have seen it. Um, one of the best things about it so far has been that the top story was the return of the Rotary Students of the Month in person. And that just shows you how much the community, I believe, was really wanting to get, um, in person back. And the next one, two, are an initiative we started, um, it's called the Spark Award. And it's just recognizing some different people in our school system, faculty, staff, everyone, that makes, gives that spark to really start the fire, um, for our students. Pamlico County Primary School, they have seven hundred and thirty-one followers. Some of you may remember, it has, had a different website and we had to shut it down for some technical difficulties, so we're kind of building that again. But still, the size, what's the, uh, population of, how many students do we have at the primary school? Around three hundred or so? And then we have a reach of about five thousand three hundred and ninety people that take a look at it, so that's pretty powerful. The first one, the top post is the Christmas concert and then the second post is, of course, Ms. Sessi Spivey graduating and then the recognition for the Students of the Month. Anderson reaches around fifty-seven hundred people. Um, the calendar awards, the, uh, job application and then of course, the, um, student awards. Pamlico Middle School, as you can see, as they go up, there's more and more people and that's what we're trying to do. We're building the community. So as you're starting to join in, in the primary school and they move on, well, they join Anderson and they join the middle school and they join the high school. So now, at the middle school, they get around seventy-four hundred people. And you start to see that they really become engaged in what the students are actually doing in classrooms and what they see on a day-to-day basis. The very first, the top one, I think, had around five thousand hits. And it was Derek Forbes Culinary Class with Chef Reese, um, at Pamlico High School. They have about two point eight thousand followers, of course, the largest in our, in our little district. Um, engagement is nine thousand three hundred and fifteen and the reach is around eight, eighty-five hundred people. So, when you think about when we pushed out an initiative, it's not just, um, a worksheet or a flyer being stuck into a Tuesday folder and being sent home like it was not that many years ago, actually. Now, it's a direct, direct message to people's phones, computers, um, and we can actually gauge what's important to the community. And when you look at what's important, as to why, you know, people laugh about, oh, you look at the followers, you look at clicks. Well, you do, but you look at it for a purpose, there's a purpose behind it. You know, you look to see, people obviously think that the Spark initiative is important. is important, they share it like crazy, it's been the one that's been the most popular, just because people want to see what we do as a faculty, as a staff, it's very important. So it kind of um, guides our judgment as to what we do in importance in the future. Um, the top one here is the award ceremony, which I was excited that the high school brought back this past semester, I think there's another one coming up this week, is it right? And um, then the principal on a shelf was number two, and then the third one was actually the Hurricanes head football coach, one who posted about his um, student's GPA, which I think is fantastic.
Yeah, that's awesome.
The Pamlico County High School has a lot of affiliates that go along with it, it's not just the one, like it is mainly with the other schools, Pamlico Bands, the athletics page has one, um, the FFAA has one, F, no, FF.
FFA.
So close.
You almost got through that one.
No, I almost got through it, as the Instagram uh, for Pamlico County High School, and the county, as the county football, um, and it's also, when we've gone back through and looked at analytics of who's looking at the high school post, and who actually um, accesses our post through Instagram to go to our website, that we've noticed that there's a large portion of Instagram hits that go to our Facebook page, so we, uh, Ms. Jackson and I were discussing potentially setting up an Instagram page that may hit a different um, category. Okay, uh, video creations, the board appreciation video, uh, that I hope you enjoyed last time.
We did.
Loved doing it, some superintendent segments that may be coming up.
Stay tuned, Super N Sixty.
Um, and I've been very fortunate that Mr. Josh Gasly asked me to work on the teacher recruitment video that they'll be able to show throughout as they go on their recruitment tours, um, and also, Ms. Tammy Spain asked me to do the parent tutorial video with Pamlico County Schools information, because a lot of times, when you look at some of these tutorials from Power School, um, it's hard, because theirs doesn't look like ours, so we've been able to go in and actually take our Power School and put our branding on it, and lead our, lead our parents through it. Um, I think we probably are going to have to go through a YouTube channel for the Pamlico County Schools, so we can have everything consolidated, and Ms. White and I were looking at ways to streamline the website design, so that when people do start out at primary and continue to work up, that they know to look under the parents tab for such and such, they know to look under the students tab for this, and it's not something new every single time. And of course, continued support for all school and district events, and that's it, I made it! Any questions?
Well, before um, she steps down, it has been, it's very uplifting to see, cause we know there's a lot of good things happening in our schools, and people say all the time, if, if you don't tell your story, someone else will, and it has been really great with all the things, cause sometimes, we know that there's a really awesome teacher doing great things, but we may, we may brag to them, but we don't brag to the world, and Elizabeth has been capturing that, and I really, it has just really helped a lot to see all the good things going on in the schools, and so, I'm just very thankful for that, and just keep doing what you're doing.
Aw, thank you, I appreciate it, I do wanna say that the media coordinators at the schools and the principals have been fantastic, as well as adding to the support and calling me in when um, they have different things going on, that's it. Oh, one little tidbit I would, I like to share with my digital design students, three years ago, when I started teaching digital design, how long, it was about, it took you about three seconds to decide if you're gonna watch a video on social media or not, three seconds, before you decide if you're gonna read that post, how much do you think it is now, that was three years ago? One point five.
Wow.
So, within a one point five seconds, your brain decides whether or not you're gonna give that thing a look or not, just a little tidbit.
Anybody else have anything?
That was really informative, thank you.
Thank you.
So, what department does the digital design um, of course, fall under?
That's CTE, and actually, um, Brandy Angelo does it now, and she is doing a fabulous job. She's getting a lot of, I think they're participating in the uh, photography competition coming up, so it's gonna be even more, a lot of fun things going on.
That, that's great, I went to the um, Orianna Women's Club um, art show that they had, and some of the students' presentations were awesome, they were great.
It's really amazing when you can go through, um, you know, there are a lot of kids that enjoy art, but they're not quite sure where they fit in at it, and so when they go into digital design and animation, their brain works almost in a different way, I wanna say, because they're so, they've grown up in animation, they've grown up watching video games and things, so what they can come up with is beautiful.
Yeah, some of their, some of their um, presentations were great, it was really good.
Yep, thank you so much.
I was gonna say, thank you for what you're doing, this is so valuable, um, I think this was one of those areas where you either try to stay ahead of the curve, or you get left behind quickly now with technology, the way it is, so it's, it's some of the best free advertisement, with Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and that's where the kids are at now, if you don't, if you don't believe it,
Parents too.
Look at what they're at, and parents too, exactly, yeah, outstanding job, thank you.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Elizabeth, last but certainly not least, of the superintendent's report, I would like to ask Mr. Bobby Griffin, it looks like he's got some coaching staff with him as well, but I'll let you do that, come on up. You're gonna start.
I'll start it first.
Okay. They didn't tell me that, it's my superintendent's report, you should've told me.
Excited to bring to you our um, new football coach, he's not really, he's been here about a year now, I think in January last year is when he started in the school, so he had a little bit of time to get to know everybody before he actually started football practice. Um, he's done an outstanding job um, building relationships with students. Um, this year, I think we've had more players on our football team than we've probably had in quite some time, um, but he asked me if he could come meet you guys and talk to you guys, and just tell you about what his vision is for his program and community's support and all those good things, so now I'll introduce to you uh, our new football coach, Bobby Griffin.
First of all, I'm very honored and humbled to be here tonight, uh, as you can see, I do not like to stand still, I move down a little bit, kind of uh, having been a football coach. Uh, before I talk about my program and everything that we do, I wanna thank Ms. Howard, you have done a tremendous job this year with everything digital with us for football, I greatly appreciate it. Also, Ms. Potter, over there, I've seen her as well, you have also been at every football game, we greatly appreciate it, and also, Mr. Hyrum Lutton has also been a tremendous resource with us, for, for all photos and digital stuff, and we greatly appreciate it. Uh, moving forward, Hurricane football, I wanna talk about our season this year, and also some things about me and what our plans are for the future, and how I like that they incorporate not just sports, but academics and things that go way beyond the football field. So, about me, uh, I'm, I'm, of course, that little short guy in the middle right there, but uh, I've been a coach for over twenty years, I'm, I'm, believe it or not, I'm a little bit past thirty, I'm in my twenties, God bless, I grew up in uh, eastern North Carolina, Spring Garden area, I say, uh, my cousin back there, Irving, know about that area, anyway. I played college football at Elon University, I was a walk-on kid, so the value of academics before getting on the field was very important in my life. My uh, parents told me if I didn't pass, I didn't play, so three five GPA, they told me I had to play football and other sports, so it was always been academics first that, why, you know, why I'm here now. Also, in the, with coaching, I've been coaching, my experience has started with youth sports, middle, and high school, matter of fact, when I say youth sports, I coached uh, youth girl basketball team at one point, just because of the influence of sports in our communities. I'm working on my third year of marriage with my beautiful wife, Kelly Lynn Hart Griffin, and in the process of being married to her, I have a beautiful daughter named Adeline, who looks just like her mother. Her bit up too. Uh, this season in recap, our football team, first and foremost, our JV program, we haven't had JV here in over twelve years, so I'm very fortunate and blessed, Coach Nate Daniels was our football coach for the JV, uh, did a tremendous job, but we have thirty-eight players this year, we were up thirteen players from last season, uh, we hoping that number will continue to improve. Other things with, with those numbers was, we had eight seniors, ten juniors, eight sophomores, and eleven freshmen, we hope that number will continue to go up, once again, we were second in the conference in JV, and we also three and eight uh, in conference for boys league with a first-round playoff appearance, something I definitely want to improve on from year to year. Coaching staff, uh, going on with my coaching staff, I have Coach Reese, Coach Daniels, Coach Spees, Coach Harris, who's here tonight, uh, Coach, volunteer coaches, Coach Bennett, and our first responder, Scott Durson.
Mr. Griffin, Mr. Griffin. They can't hear you at home, you gotta hold it closer, you gotta hold it closer to you.
Put it like right here?
Yes. I'm sorry, you can put it in there, they just put your mouth really close to it, sorry. We can hear you, but they can't.
Alright, well, I apologize to everybody that cannot, can, hope y'all can hear me now. Alright, but uh, my coaching staff, the good thing about my coaching staff is that four of them are in the school building, so when I'm not around one of those, they are there um, in the classroom with kids, with everything that they're going through, whether it's academics, or whether it is something personal, or something that uh, kids may need lunch money, kids may need to talk to them about something going on at home, we have coaches that are on staff, some coaches that we play this year have almost no coaches on, on site, so we are blessed that we were able to do that, we also have some guys from the community that also help with that. In addition to my coaching staff, also wanted to acknowledge two of my middle school coaches that are here, Head Coach, Coach Taylor, back in the back, and also Coach Lewis, who's right behind me. We have worked together, not only just to be football coaches, the, the former brotherhood, that will help show our young men and young ladies that they want to play, cause we want everybody to play football and other sports, but showing them that there's another way, there's more than just hanging around doing the wrong thing, that there are dark men that are doing something positive in our community, and we love for them to be a part of it as well, so I thank y'all for being here as well. Uh, moving forward, we have, uh, after the season, we have some after-season honors, uh, very fortunate to have these young men play this season, I know our record did not emulate what we wanted to do, but nonetheless, they had some amazing stats, they did great, uh, Zaimel Harper, Tyler Stevens, Jaden Williams were our first-team All-Conference, second team, Wade Whitaker, Ron Baker, Elijah Decouy, Tyree Barber, and Johnson Schaefer, all great young men, and a good thing about majority of these kids, majority of these kids have at least a three-point-oh GPA, so some of these kids are trying to do it the right way, some really are. As I talk about academics, one of the big things that I was harping on this year, that I was adamant about improving, was our academic success, and as you see, this was our first nine weeks, that followed with honor roll, team GPA, principal lists, uh, the amount of kids in the program that had a three-point-oh GPA, and though they had a four-point-oh. Now, I actually did the research, the second nine weeks after football season ended, uh, the numbers dropped, and I will say, because we didn't, you know, in the season, we had study hall, uh, we had study hall at least once, twice a week, if a kid grade was below eighty, they had to come see us after practice, and we made sure that their parents knew what the deal was, nothing personal, but you're here to be a student first, that's just the bottom line. So, uh, I'm hopeful that we tell kids to play football after football season end, go to wrestling, go to basketball, go to do something else, go join a club, cause by doing more and more uh, sports and organizations, your grades normally stay up, so that's something we try to harp on a lot. Community, one of the big thing that I was blessed when I was in Craven County, I can't, I won't say out loud what school I went to, but one thing we did was, we did land in the community, we took care of our own, alright, so, Eagles. We did an amazing job of taking care of our own, because we, like y'all say, we want our uh, elementary kids to grow up, to get the Friday, to get the, the middle school to be high school, we want them to have pride in all the things that we do. Now, we didn't get to do a lot this year, I'm hoping to pick that up next year, uh, we had a community day that was going on at the track, I was told about that, so kids in the summer, now, of course, when I met these kids, we haven't had a football practice yet, so I didn't know if any of these kids were gonna stick, but we had, almost like fifteen kids show up at some point just to be a part of, to help out with that, and very blessed. We also were able to do a one-day football camp, I look forward to bringing that back again, as you see our numbers, we had almost twenty kids, I look to get thirty and forty the following year, honestly, and if there are any baseball camps I've been to, since I've been a former baseball player, I'll go there as well, wrestling, any sport I can do, I will be there, and try to have kids there as well. Uh, plan for next season, the biggest plan for next season i- is to win. Just kidding, I'm sorry. But when I say win, not just win on the football field, win in every aspect, win in the classroom, win with discipline, win with being the first kid in class, being the last one to leave, those things are more important than what you do on the football field, because your, your football field lasts up for so long, but your impact and your community will last a lot longer. So, first and foremost, we uh, we have an eighth grade signing night that we started last year, and I wanna pick that up next year and make it bigger, I wanna make that something that is a yearly thing, everybody in the community, uh, you know, you all welcome to attend, we like that, we love for teachers, uh, former coaches, board members, anybody that comes to that. We also, once again, hopefully, we'll do the football camp, that is something that uh, me and my assistant coaches take a lot of pride in doing, and it's a lot of fun, and also Camp Vandemere, we had the opportunity this year to go to Camp Vandemere for our football preseason. Some of the other teams were going to an FCA camp that costs about a hundred and eighty-five dollars per kid, Camp Vandemere cut us a deal, and they will only charge us ninety bucks per kid for the weekend. We came up to about a bill of about three thousand dollars, so we fundraised a little bit, did a, a good fundraiser, and we were able to go, and the team bonding that we got with those young men was something that we wouldn't have got anywhere else, especially being on one night at midnight, and Coach Harris knew about that night, but uh, watching those young men form and bond, we started to see their character, and like I said, that's what we kinda look for as coaches. My future plans include, uh, of course, every kid that comes through our program, we want them all to graduate, we want them not to say, "Well, Coach, you know, it was tough, but no, if you made it through a football practice, you can graduate high school, you can walk across that stage with your he- head held high," we uh, believe in that strongly. We also uh, want to try to get kids into college, if they're passionate, that they love, whether they might power, and the coaches will as well, to get them to the next level, but also, as I say that, the end goal is not college football, I was blessed, I walked on and played, that's not the end goal, the end goal is to get kids work-ready, also to get them, maybe to be a college graduate, whether it be a two-year or four-year, to get them workforce-ready, and become better, better followers, that, that's our end goal, if they go to college to accomplish that, that's awesome, if they do another route, long they are successful, and do it the right way, even more, even better. Uh, also, we get a hundred percent of our weight trainers, uh, or my kids in weight training, there's some that I'm starting right now, Mr. McCandless has done an amazing job of trying to get those numbers up, hopefully, we get to a point that, I gotta find a new space, cause we have too many kids in the weight room, than what I'm trying to get to, and right now, my full period, we're pretty close, I mean, and, and that's what we want, and uh, we encourage in our weight training class, not just football players, you can be a basketball player, you can run a track, wrestling, "Coach, I'm in ROTC, you wanna lift?" "Yes, come on in," we try to open it up to everybody, so that's another goal, and uh, also, our middle school recruitment, me and Coach Taylor and Coach Lewis have been beating down the hallway, trying to talk with kids, and that's something we will continually do. Uh, I'm gonna start by next week, or the week after, starting to make middle school visits, and keep, keep an eye on some of these future Hurricanes as well. Community, support, and canes given back, one thing that we do before every game is a team meal, alright, that's a great way to bond and fellowship, uh, back in my day when we played, I played sports, we had churches and community members that would volunteer and bring, you know, team meal, it could be Chick-fil-A, it could be your famous spaghetti, I mean, it could be sandwiches, I think Coach Harris wanted to bring was chili. The thing Coach Harris wanted to bring was chili. Like, didn't that might have hurt? But, uh, but, but nonetheless, we, we like to have community members that would love to volunteer for that. For one, it puts your name in the place. It put a name with a face. It let kids know that people outside of their parents are looking out for them. Uh, this year, we leaned heavily on our senior parents. They, they were amazing helping us out with team meals. I don't think we ever went without a team meal. And of course, with JV, we added three games. They also did a good job of helping us with that as well. So that's something that community, we hopefully can gear behind and work that out and get that better because a lot of parents just, they just can't. I mean, it's hard to feed 40 kids. I mean, some of our kids, we want to say they eat lunch, but a lot of them kind of skip it. Don't know why. Because I would, I would love to have that lunch they have right now. But, uh, nonetheless, it's, it's something that will help as well. Also Camp Vandemere, uh, raising that money is something that we, we'll do a fundraiser again. I don't care if we have to do car washes. Uh, me, uh, washing cars in a cutoff shirt is something that I'm very fond of. If it raised the money, they get, get these kids there, uh, then we'll do that as well. Things we want to do with football players to give back to our area, uh, mentoring program because hopefully some of these kids are doing things the right way. We might have some elementary and middle school kids that are at risk that can use a mentor, that can give a helping hand and say, "Hey, look, you can do this. I'm doing it. You can do it this way." Also, uh, one thing we were doing, uh, Friday carpool duty. On Fridays, on day of games, we had our players dress in jerseys, and they would be at Fred Anderson and also the primary school, uh, just to help with carpool duty. That was a good way for them to see, uh, what was going on. If we had an home game or away game, and the parents responded well to that. Uh, I'm also wanting to get to a point that we can have, you know, lunch with a student. Uh, pick a kid or some kids that we think might be doing well at the primary school or Fred A or the middle school, have a couple of our players surprise them in uniform and eat, eat lunch with them. Then it will go a long way to keep these on the right path. And also, last but not least, read a book to a class. Same concept. Have, uh, one of the football players go in and pick a book and read to them. Uh, not, not a big book, you know, one of the, medium-sized books. Just, uh, talk to them real quick and just, uh, just find a way to, for them to say, "This is a positive thing." And that's just what we're trying to do. Now, uh, big, big item that I'm very passionate about, youth football. That is something that, that is a vision that I would love to see back in this community. Every program, uh, from Beaufort, Craven, Pitt, Carteret have all benefited from a youth football program. Uh, if I'm gonna think correct, the last time there was a program here was 15 years ago. And Coach Taylor reminded me, that group were the last team that played for a state title here. So that, the importance of youth football here. Also, what it, what youth football does is give kids accountability. And go ahead and tell them, because the way I would ever run it, if I was in charge of it, academic come first. So I've seen some programs where kids just get in trouble in school, in elementary, and still play. I would allow that. If you're messing up in the classroom, you can't play. So if these kids are early, I have to behave to play. I have to keep my grades up to play. I can't goof around in the classroom and won't be able to play. Um, and like I say, these counties around us that have had higher numbers with playing, it's starting to pop one. Uh, New Bern just celebrated a state championship team, and one of the players got interviewed. And he said flat out, "The reason why I'm playing," because he's a really good basketball player, "but he said, 'The reason why I'm playing because I'm doing something I started in youth football with my teammates.'" So it, it carries some weight. Now, to get that program started would take, you know, like I say, a lot of money. Uh, I bought it priced out, uh, off the top of my head for 25 players, helmet, shoulder pads, uh, game pants. You're talking about probably about $7,000 off the top of my head. Now, I'm looking in the grants. Carolina Panthers is doing a $10,000 grant that I'm already looking into, uh, getting everything filled out. Uh, the beauty of things that we already have a gorgeous football field right, right behind me, uh, with gorgeous lights and great communities and everything. So it will be something that down the road, if it could be next season, I would love it. If it's next year, great. But as long as you keep it here, that's just one of the things that I want to give back. It does so much for our community. Football is one of the biggest, uh, organization or entities of any organization that we have at our school. And there's, there's just one way to get kids on the right path. So that being said, are there any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I commend you in terms of, um, your vision in getting youth football. Because, um, like you said, it, it, um, plays a very important part of your success. You know, one of the things that I've seen, um, in the past is that, uh, when a, a kid starts playing football in the middle school for the very first time and get hit real hard one time, they're ready to quit. And in order for that, to prevent that, I think it starts at youth football.
And to piggyback off of him, I actually, we, uh, met Coach Harris and Coach Lewis actually met with the freshman boys today. Uh, because I met with them eight, with them last year at eighth graders, and just talked to them about things, not football, but just, you know, doing the right thing. Uh, they have, you know, they have a lot of amount of write-ups. And one thing that we try to help keep you from getting written up is playing sports or joining an organization. And I think that if youth football was around, I think that a lot of discipline problem would be, uh, lessened and, and reduced.
Coach Griffin, I, I love everything you said. Um, I've been coaching a lot too, and, and I can, everything that you said is right. There's a lot of, a lot of kids that don't have a fa- father figure in their life. And my daughter loves you. She thinks, she thinks you're awesome. Um, you know, some kids can benefit so much for, from sports. And I think that's something that we have at this school system that, that really helps us a lot. You have my support 100%.
Thank you. Sport saved my life. I, uh, I told the kids this morning, and I, I don't lie. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm a 100% honest with everything I tell them. Uh, if it weren't for sports, I'd be dealing drugs, the bottom line. I, I, the drug was a racket in my family. It was everywhere I looked. If it were not for sports, sometimes I'd have walked away. But if it were not for sports, I wouldn't be here right now.
One more comment, if I may. Um, I appreciate the fact, um, your emphasis on the academic part. Because we, we do know that without, uh, academics, they can't play sports. So I, I do appreciate that.
I like, I like what you were saying about the, um, the players going over to the other schools and helping out. Um, I think that's probably very influential on the students. And that's a great idea. I like that.
And the mentoring, the impact that it can have on some of the young men that are coming up.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all for your time.
But before you sit down, I, um, saw you at Athletic Banquet and told you we were gonna get you here. So great presentation, great job. And, um, I graduated from Elon as well, so we got something in common.
Thank you, Coach Griffin.
Thank you.
And that, Mr. Chairman, is all I have.
I think that's the longest superintendent's report we've ever had, but it was good.
Wasn't my fault.
Yeah, we thank you. So we see people getting up and leaving. They must have been here just for you, Coach Griffin.
Of course, of course, of course.
All right. Outstanding superintendent's report. And I, I really like these updates with some of the, um, the other departments and things. It's very informative. Um, hopefully we'll see more.
Absolutely.
I really liked the update on the sports. I
Oh, yeah. Good.
I wouldn't mind seeing an update with all our sports. It's very informative. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
I like them too.
That was good. Good job.
Well, and you, don't you remember Elizabeth said that one of the highest, um, outreach is, was actually the academics for one of the teams, football team, I think. So I mean, it shows you that it's important to the community and our people too.
Yeah. And athletics, our, our county's always had good athletics, strong athletics and close. Everybody's close. And several of us on here played athletics, you know, so, um, hurricane pride goes, goes a long way. And it really keeps the kids busy and doing, stay, keeping them out of trouble. So that's a great job. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Um, we have two items on there. If we need to vote on them individually, we can. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. So moving on to, uh, agenda item seven in our governance, seven point one. There's been a lot of discussion since our last meeting on school calendar. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Jackson.
So I'm gonna start, and then Mr. Rice is gonna grab the mic. Where did he go? Oh, okay. And we have Betsy McCandless here, and of course, Ms. Dixon. And what I'd like to say to you is that our, this is the original calendar that we, uh, we presented last month. And it's very much, as I told you last week, like, or last month, like our calendar we have now. Uh, however, during the, during this past month, several, I think, community members' parents have reached out to some board members and asked why our high school students do not have exams, excuse me, prior to Christmas. And quite frankly, and so I'm gonna talk about that just a little bit, if that's okay with you guys, because I think some of you asked me if I would do that. So when I got that very first text, email, whichever it was, but everybody got it, I was sitting beside the superintendent in Carteret County. We were at a meeting in Greenville. And I leaned over and I said, "You guys had exams before Christmas, didn't you?" And they were just, I think, in the middle of, um, I mean, they had just started their next semester, maybe hadn't even gone back to school yet, because they had a good bit of time off after Christmas. And he said, "Yeah, we, we did." And I said, "Well, how did your breakup, how did your breakout look, like, for your semesters?" Because keep in mind, the information that I sent you, that doesn't change. The legislation tells us when we can start school and when we have to end school. So that's not going to change. So what it essentially is gonna mean is a short semester and then a long semester. So I asked him, at, at that time, I think he said maybe one had, the first semester had 73 days or something like that, and then the other one had 107 days. Anyway, it was a big difference. And I said, "Well, tell me about the things that that brings." And we, we've, we've looked at this before, and it was just with such a small high school. It was just a little scary to think that you would put all your EOCs in second semester. Anyway, I assumed a lot of things. So then I thought, "Okay, I'm gonna do my due diligence." Because you guys were texting and emailing back and forth. So I came, matter of fact, as I was sitting there, I texted Crystal Dixon and said, "Let's look at, let's give them an option like this. Nothing's gonna change in the beginning, not much is gonna change in the end, but let's look at what it would look like. But if, and while we're doing that, let's bring in the counselor and the administration at the high school, and let's talk about, like, what, what do they want? What do the students want? What do the teachers want? Because the teachers are ultimately the ones that now have to teach the curriculum in a shorter amount of time, first semester, and then have lots of extra time in second semester. Well, there's some, there's some advantages there. So with that, everybody jumped right in it and, and did a survey, and we had lots of really good conversation. I have a mock calendar for you, and it's very drafty, I'll say. It's a very drafty calendar. I'm gonna let, um, and she said, "You don't have to ask me anything." No, I'm going to ask her to speak and talk to you a little bit about that process. And then what I'd ask you to do is, um, Ms. White has a copy of the draft, and she's gonna put it up, well, not yet, but in a second, she's gonna put it up. And my suggestion is gonna be, let's have some really good rich conversation about this tonight. If you decide you want to vote, vote, if you're gonna vote on the first one. But I really think we need to have a conversation, and then if you decide you really like this second option, let's have a second reading of that one and, and talk to your constituents and talk to the kids. And we can do more surveys, more in-depth, because it look, it sounds really good. Have exams before Christmas. What's better? But there are some caveats to that. So with that, I'm gonna stop talking because I think there's some beautiful things about it, and there's some scary things about it. I'm gonna let Ms. McCandless talk to you about the survey. And I have a copy of your information from that, or if you just want to talk about it, or shoot.
Well, I, I met with Ms. Crystal Dixon and Ms. Jackson, and, um, we thought it was important to talk to the stakeholders. So initially, we planned to survey the teachers. The, and basically what I said, you know, you could potentially be used, losing about 20 days of instruction. And that is huge. That's like four weeks of instruction. Um, and yet still, even with that, like, worst-case scenario, losing that much time, over 80% said absolutely, "We, we want exams before Christmas." There's large conver, a lot of conversation about, um, when we come back for Christmas. Really, our instruction is done. We have taught the content, um, and we're reviewing at this point, but the kids are so checked out, they might have regressed, just like they regress a little bit when they come back from, from summer break. There's regression because most of the students, there are always outliers. But most of the students have not looked at their content, have not studied, have not prepared since they left on that, that half-day before Christmas. So it was, um, I don't have it right in front of me, but it was over 80% of the staff said yes. There were some that said no, one who said no, because like, maybe is not an option, like, it depends. Um, and there were some that expressed concern that since then have kind of, they're weebly-wobbly on it. They could go either way. Um, I then decided that I, I felt an even larger stakeholder that we need to discuss were our students. So I sent the survey link out to a few, I, I reworked it, same information, but geared towards students, same questions, um, in which I asked, "How would you feel about this? And then what would your concerns be?" Um, so I, I sent it out to students, the teachers. It was a random take. It was current freshmen, it was current seniors, it was honor students and those in the standard level as well. Some who are very motivated students, some who are not as motivated as the others. Again, over 80% said yes, they wanted exams before Christmas. Um, the rest said no, some for reasons I'm comfortable with what we've got. Um, some with very legit, "I am nervous about cramming that much in one time, um, in, in a shortened period of time and what that would mean." And others, um, just thinking, admitting to them, to us that they were kind of checked out by the time that they got back from Christmas and feared that their scores were not reflective of what they would have done had they taken those exams prior to Christmas. So, um, when I got back the, the feedback from teachers, it was, "How do we do this?" One major concern is hurricanes. We have a few of those, um, both in people form and in weather, um, in our district. And, um, that is a concern. However, that, when we discussed, that would be a time where we, as a district, would do what we've done several years. When a hurricane hits, we might have to say, "We're not gonna be able to do this year, this year." We've missed some instruction. We can't rely on virtual education when the power's out, um, and internet's out. So that might be a time where we have to be flexible and look at the calendar again like we've done in years past. Um, otherwise, what do we do? While there is concern about the curriculum and that content time, or the time for that instruction, um, being lost, um, we also said, "We're a small school," which is a blessing and a curse, because we're limited in resources, yet we do have flexibility to really figure out what works best for our kids, our two students, um, and our community. And we said we could be very intentional, and that is my word. It's been my word for the past few years. But being intentional in the way we make these decisions, y'all do that every, all the time. Um, we would do that when we're looking at the master schedule. And one way we thought we could remedy this would be to take our honors-level courses, especially those that were state-tested, English II, Math III, Math I, and, um, I'm forgetting something, Biology. Those honors-level courses would potentially be in the fall. There's an expectation of rigor. You're getting weighted credit on your GPA. The content is the same. You have to teach the same curriculum. The test is the same. Some of that rigor could be incorporated in the pacing in which the instruction is given. So you would have less time, but students who are qualified for honors classes, it's, um, assumed that they've met the, they've met the prerequisites to be in that honors-level course and that they could handle the, in, the faster pace of instruction. Um, that would also mean inclusion classes, um, kids who needed extra time, they would be in the spring. Some of the other things that can, I know I'm throwing a lot at you right now, but, um, uh, another, you know, other concerns were, were the things that we have that make high school, high school. Our ROTC program has AMI, which is a big, big deal at our school every fall, um, that involves a lot of practice. Well, if we're intentional in the way we plan, and my goal is to not have any EOC courses taught during fourth period at all next year, that's my, my hope, my dream, that is what I'm working on. That means none of those students would be leaving early for sports, would be in an EOC when they're leaving. None of the, we could also plan that ROTC does have a class fourth period, and they do their practices for AMI during fourth period. Again, nobody being pulled out of for AMI during fourth period. Again, nobody being pulled out of AOC courses. And then, I'm trying to think, what else? Like, just being intentional, a pep rally, fourth period, it's not going to be, it's something that matters to high school, but we could still be intentional in the way we plan everything, and maximize and prioritize our instructional time, especially for those classes.
And to be exact, I do have her survey. 83% of the staff said yes to this, and 84% of the students said yes, which means 17% of the staff said no, and 16% of the students said no. And again, like you said, some of them have floundered since then, because some of them just really weren't sure exactly what that meant. A lot of them heard, "Yay, exams before Christmas," and then some of them heard teaching a small amount of time, because the exact, with the calendar that we have, we mopped up, we actually add, we're going a little bit, if we, you know, we had to add anything we could for our semester. Took out a workday that we had put in for letter train, and we took that out, so that was, we could add one more day. Then we added one more day just before Christmas. There's some take, there's some give and take. If you noticed, districts around us, some of them went further, went closer to Christmas. We, when, even with doing that, we're looking at 78 days in Semester 1, and 101 in Semester 2, so a difference of 23 days.
And another thing we looked at, as far as being intentional, we, we allow five days for exams currently as it stands. First period, second period, day one, day two, so on. And then the fifth day for makeups. Being that there's fewer EOC courses taught in the fall, we could consolidate, and again, being intentional with our planning for those exam days, and I spoke with Kim Potter about this, and I spoke with Dr. Johnson regarding CTE exams, and then just the testing schedule, we could consolidate those days into possibly two exam days, maybe three, and then even use them possibly the afternoons for CTE exams. So, CTE exams. So we could be very, we could, we could add extra instruction in there just by bringing, consolidating our exam days.
So there are some things that we could do, and I'm happy to share. If you want to go ahead and, and bring up the calendar, Ms. Metter, who, calendar was her thing when she was here, she actually did do a mock-up of, again, looking at the very same, it's going to be hard for you guys to see, looking at the same start date and end date, which one of the reasons why we like to get this calendar out so early is so that parents can plan for the summer, and that's one thing that's not changing, is that we're still going to start at the same time. So putting off this for another month, should it impact anything such as that. But, you know, she separated it by, you know, the, the blue or the aqua is the first semester, still have the, the holidays we have to have in there, and then exams, and then you can see how at the end. And, and for the, the younger grades, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference, to be honest. This is really just impacting the high school. They can adjust there, because they're in the same classes pretty much all year, maybe with elect, because it's a little bit different, but they, they can adjust. So that is a lot to throw at you at one time, but I'm, you know, I'd like for, and Ms. Dixon, if you want to say anything that we've missed, or whatever, and then we can kind of have some dialogue about it, and you guys can decide what you want to do. But I will say, I can't give you an exact number, but the majority of the districts, majority, are doing some form of this. And, you know, this all started from, I don't remember how many years ago, save our summers, and now there's a big push for save our Christmas break, because we know, and some of the parents that emailed you guys, that's what they said, was that, "You know, for Christmas break, my kid did nothing," or, "My, my kid studied the whole time over Christmas break," and that's not what we feel like break is for. So, Ms. Dixon.
I want to just say, I appreciate the work that you put in in getting the survey back to us so quickly. We met with her on Monday of last week, and the turnaround was, I think, Thursday before we left to go home. So it's nice to have some feedback from the teachers and the students. The 22-days difference makes me nervous, just as a former teacher and a former admin, but I think in talking with the teachers and knowing some of the things that we're working with right now at the high school in particular, I think this will create a sense of urgency with some of our teachers as well, instead of that mentality of, "We'll touch that again after Christmas," or, "I'll have after Christmas to, to go back over that." I think it will really push them to be intentional with their instruction leading up to that. And I think when we had the conversation about having the flexibility, should we have a hurricane or severe weather, it doesn't even have to be a hurricane. I mean, we've seen in the last few years, we could go home on a Friday and, and not come back for a little while. So knowing that we have the flexibility to then come back to the table and say, "You know what, we are going to bump exams later," I think gave us some, a little bit of a, you know, a sense of ease in, in looking at a different, a different calendar.
Kathy. It would be interesting to know if the, the teachers who did not vote in favor of this were the, the teachers who had tested areas, you know, how that fell out. Do you, do you have any?
Yeah, we do.
So what teacher who voted no was Joanna Holden. So she was very concerned. Do you know her? She was very concerned. However, we have gone back and looked, because she teaches a lot of the Math 1 and, and the Math 1 honors even. And even looking at Math 1 honors, it made her nervous, because our fresh babies are adjusting to high school. Sometimes we joke, "They're ready for high school in about February." But the pacing is very different. However, now that the middle school has brought back in where they are doing more Math 1 as an eighth-grade math option, there's probably less of an issue where there would be a large number that would need to go and feel comfortable jumping right in to Math 1 honors. So it would more than likely still be a Math 1 honors option in the spring with foundations for a lot of those students. So Joanna's kind of one of those, it makes her nervous, but she's one who's kind of wavering on it, and I think may feel a little bit more confident. Christine Wayne, 100%, she feels like she's kind of lost them when they've come back from Christmas. She feels like her, her Biology scores take a hit. And I think, you know, you saw that pretty much all across the board. The English teachers felt the same way. The math department seemed to be the most nervous, which makes sense to me. But with the idea, they all kind of made the comment that with intentional planning, they'd feel a little bit more comfortable with it.
And I think as the high school is, you know, currently working on the schedule for, you know, next year, that's why we do need to, you know, really take a look at this. And, and I do appreciate, like Ms. Dixon said, the time that you put into this and the conversations and the feedback, because I wasn't really sure what kind of feedback I was going to get, and it's been very helpful.
I can't believe I wanted the microphone again.
I know, right?
But I will say, I also, when I looked, I kind of printed or did a mock-up of a schedule, not like where it would be, first, second, third, but I did a prediction of, based on the numbers that are in Grades 8 through 11 now, and what has historically been where we've had, you know, two honors English sections, one English, or one Math 1 honors. I did that, and I used that to figure out, could we get those sections in the fall semester? And we could. And then supplement with like some, the Math 2 that's not tested, the foundations courses that are not tested as well in the fall. So based on, you know, if history proves to be the trend continuing, we could fit those, those honors-level courses in the, in the fall.
Ms., Ms.?
McCandless.
Ms. Potter does the testing. So what are your thoughts about it from a testing standpoint?
That was no problem.
It's not?
It worked easy.
Okay. And you say there are other districts around us that?
Oh, yes. I will say that one of the first districts I heard about doing it was actually when Florence hit, and they ended up having like 50 days in that semester. So that's the part that does scare me. Like you mentioned, we would probably want to alter our semester if something like that happened. But yes, there are a lot of districts, most districts around us are doing it. And, you know, my, my thought was, well, we're small, you know, we have, in most cases, one teacher that teaches that both semesters. But, you know, even in those larger districts, they have small schools the size of ours, and they figure it out. And we don't want to put them all online, and we're not, we really want to still have good, quality teaching for our children. And it's not even been mentioned yet about the advantage to these high school students as far as taking community college classes and graduating, the ones that graduate early, the community college, you know, courses of our, or not just community college, even the university, courses have already started. You know, we find ways sometimes to try to help them to, to be able to do that. You know, we had some students that, you know, we, we heard about at our last board meeting that had an opportunity with a company that, that was two week, that two weeks, and they almost were not able to even have that opportunity for those internships, because our calendar didn't align like the other schools around us did. And so that's, that's a lot of information, and I know y'all asked if we would bring it to you. So we brought it to you, and, you know, I certainly would welcome any more questions. I also, if you, if you take my advice, and let's just vote next month, what we could do is, this was kind of a quickie that Cherry mocked up, but we could get you a copy of this for the next board meeting, so you can look at exactly what it would look like. The teachers could see it, because Ms. McCandless hasn't even seen this. We don't know for sure about that schedule. Gives her time to look and really see, can we do that schedule and have those concerns addressed? And then, you know, we could vote on either or both, whatever your pleasure is.
I think, I think the main thing is the scheduling at the high school level, because for, like you said, for the other three schools, it really won't change much. Their start date, their end date, their vacations are pretty much the same, with maybe one day, give or take, here and there.
Yeah, that's right. We had to do.
For the most part, it's the scheduling at the high school that will be most impacted. And the thing you, we would want to make sure of is that we didn't have students that wanted to take an honors course and then maybe an AP course, and, and because of the scheduling, they couldn't get it fitted in, but.
Yes.
AP will remain in the spring, because all AP tests are within a couple of, two or three weeks in the day that they have to be there.
And actually, this aligns better for the AP courses, I think.
And there is a thought that those in Biology honors might then want to continue and do AP Biology. So we wonder if it could actually increase some of our AP numbers. We are teaching more AP classes this year than we have in a few years, which we're really proud of. But, you know, that is a thought and a, and a hope that we could, we could do that and maybe even build up some AP numbers.
I really like, I really like this. I think it's worth really looking at and giving it a, I mean, Ms. McCandless acts like she really has a good understanding of the scheduling, and that makes me feel good. Like Ms. Dixon said, I'm a little nervous about the 22-day difference.
23.
But, I mean, there has to be some give and take. I think the advantages far outweigh that, that disadvantage there. I know we've done it like this before, and then we switched back.
Well, we did that when we could start earlier.
Right.
When we what?
When we started earlier. So we could start earlier, and the semesters could still be even.
That's right.
But now we can't start earlier, unless something amazing happens, and that's on the next item.
So there is no rule saying that the semesters have to be equal?
No.
Yeah, if, if we were to start earlier, and I'll say this because you won't, if we, we could start earlier, but General Statuary says we can't. If we did start earlier, then DPI would not send us the funding for our superintendent's salary. School districts have done this, but their boards.
That's the rule now.
Their boards have chosen, and Rachel can probably speak on that better than I can, their, their boards have chosen to do that, and they're.
And they're being sued now, too. Mr. Smith and I were talking about that the other day, and it, someone said, "Well, who's suing them? DPI?" I said, "No, summer groups, camps, and places, things that had already set their calendars in place, and now those schools have decided to start earlier so that they can have two even semesters and, and break that rule." And so they're suing the school districts now. That's happening. Those kind of things are happening all over.
I'm, I'm going to agree with Ms. Jackson's recommendation. Let's, if you can, get this cal, get the revised calendar maybe to us sooner than before you send out the board packet.
Absolutely.
To give us time to look at it, and those that, I, you know, I, I spoke with my sister. She was kind of, you know, she said, "That's 23 days of instruction. Math 1 and Math 1 is very important." But those that have had questions, then you can have the calendar in your hand, you can meet with the ones that have asked you questions, and it'll give all of us a time to digest it. I think the numbers are showing us what everybody's wanting.
And what about parents?
Let's give another month to think about it, and.
Any feedback from parents?
Okay.
We didn't get any feedback from parents, but I think I can partner with Elizabeth to get that same data or survey out and see some stakeholder input from parents.
We have a parent advisory council meeting the end of the month, and so that can be one of the things that we add to that agenda. We'll have that before the next meeting.
Did I do?
Yeah.
That would be good, just to run it by them.
Is everyone okay with it, instead of voting on a calendar tonight?
Yes.
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Everyone at this end okay with that? Mr. McCarter?
We can wait.
Okay.
So before this week is over, we'll send you, I know you have them, but so that you have them all together, we'll send you the one from last month, and then we'll send you the one with a different, a different look.
That's a lot of good, hard work done in a short amount of time. So thank you to all those that, that helped make that happen. So I think the, some of the questions that came in after our last board meeting, do y'all feel like you got answers to those?
Good. And thank y'all for bringing that to our attention, and not, when I said, "Well, here's the legislation, we have no choice," for not just taking that as the answer. You said, "Well, are you, how can the other ones..." I mean, so we just kept pushing, and so this, this may be a good thing for our kids and our community. So, and there may be some things we haven't thought about that now we have time to think about. Ready for me?
Yes, you can go right on.
So on the same note, I had, I got an email from Rob Jackson, who used to be the superintendent in Carteret County and is now the superintendent of Buncombe County. And on the same exact vein, school districts all across North Carolina are doing a resolution for local control of school calendars, because this is not just a problem in Pamlico County, or Craven County, or Beaufort County. This is everywhere. We all, and, and the ones that have decided to defy the laws are now looking at lawsuits and that kind of thing. So I have, and I, and literally, he said, "You can copy mine, take out anything you don't want." And did, did they get a copy of this in their packet? Okay, so. Okay, so you all have a copy of this in your packet, and I don't, if you want to take a look at it, I was going to read it to you, but I don't think I probably should with my voice. If you want to take a second and read over it, see if there's anything you would like for us to take out. We did put, we did take out overwhelmingly in one where it said, "Parents, students, faculty, and other stakeholders," it said, "They, they had overwhelmingly support." We put support, because that is the feedback we've gotten so far. And this is, this would be a resolution from our board to all the state officials that Pamlico County would like to have local control. So we can, this wouldn't be an issue of 23 days less than, less than the first semester, because we would be starting whenever we chose to start.
Is everyone okay reading through it and making a decision tonight, or is this something that y'all want time to, to read and discuss at our next meeting?
Paul, if we're looking at it in terms of basing on a decision for the next calendar, I would like to have a little bit of time to read it.
Sure. Well, can we, yes, I would like to send this out though soon as possible, because these things are happening now. So could I, could you have this, and then maybe, is there a way they could send me a yay or a nay of they, if they support this, so that we can go ahead and get it out, instead of waiting? This is just asking for local control.
I'm looking at it now.
Okay.
They can't vote outside of the meeting, so you'd have to, you could have a special meeting.
Okay, so if a special meeting happens.
Yeah, we might discuss that a little bit later.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's fine, that's fine. And this is basically everything we just talked about, except with the word whereas in front of it. And it, 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 really, all it does is just, it's asking for us to be able to have this local control.
Yes. Basically, the resolution, it shows support that, that Pamlico County Board of Education is, is wanting more control, or, you know, the issues that have been created because of the limitations that are put on us on the school calendar.
But that's fine.
Yeah. You okay with that?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Ever since the legislature mandated that we start no earlier than the 26th of August, the School Board Association has been fighting to have that overturned. The option for year-round school, could we, and this is a question for our lawyer, could we possibly declare that we are a year-round school and start something like the first or second week in August?
I like the way you're thinking about it, but.
Do we have to actually be a year-round school, or can we declare that we are one?
To be in every month.
I think you would have to be in every month.
You have to have, you have to have school in every month of some sort.
What kind of nightmare would that create right now?
Well, I don't think that would fly.
I like your thinking, though. I really do.
Only month that's ever an issue is July.
Yeah.
Because you usually. Because you usually go through the first week of June, and you start in August, so I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to consider whether or not we can make that work.
I was hoping there might be a loophole.
What, whether there's worms?
What, what's your overlook?
I think you missed your calling, Mr. McCotter.
That's good thinking. Okay, so we could go to school one day in July, and.
I think that got shot down when it was brought up years and years and years ago here, but I mean, hey.
I, I remember being a student and coming back, break for, from Christmas break, coming back and have like three days, and then have exams when you've been off for a couple of weeks, and it, it just ruins the fall exams. It's a lot better for the students, the staff, it's a lot better for everyone if we could have exams before Christmas. And it's not right for the legislature to mandate that we don't have that option.
Yeah, I think that's the general consensus, most people, that's one thing most boards can agree on.
Yeah. All right, so everyone read through this, and there might be a possibility where we can approve this before our March board meeting. Is that everything on seven-two?
Yes, that's all.
All right, so we'll move on to seven-three. Ms. Jackson, are you going to start, or is Dr. Patrick going to start? Okay.
Good evening. She's my Louis. You were presented a series of policies, I think, January is when they held you for first reading, tonight is the second read on those policies, and I am asking you to consider the list of policies, to adopt the policies tonight on second read. And there, the list of policies is here in your packet.
So, again, this is second reading, do we have any discussion?
I, I do have one question.
Okay.
So, the 3101, the dual enrollment policy.
And you asked about that last month.
Yes, and, and the concern that I had last month was the wording for ninth and 10th graders to take it, take dual enrollment classes, which there's per, special provisions that allow that, were adjustments made in that policy to reflect, or is it, is it the same wording?
Those adjustments will be made, actually, in the regulation that will get attached to the policy. So, right now, we're approving all of the policies, and then we'll come back with the specifics in the regulation. So, the policy as it is will stand, but the regulation will basically come back with clarifying information, if that, if that makes sense.
So, we will have to vote again on that particular policy, because, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if we vote today to approve it, then that means the way it's published is the way, is what we follow.
Right, you won't have to vote again on, on the policy, the superintendent and her cabinet actually makes all the rec, the.
Regulations.
Regulations, but we will not have to vote again on the policy. All of the specifics, who's who, what's what, will be ironed out and made clear and specific in the regulations.
Okay, so, in terms of that particular one, I, I can vote in favor if I know that the wording and adjustments are, are going to be made, because like I said, from where I sit, reading that particular policy, it gives the impression that any ninth and 10th grader can take college classes, and I know that's not accurate.
Right, right, that's, that's correct.
So, what the board could do if you wanted, would be to pull that policy out separate, and either decide on it a later time, and figure out on the language, or even if you wanted to vote on them both tonight, that would allow you to vote as a group on the, all the rest of the policies, and then if you have a difference of opinion on one policy, then you could pull that out, take a vote on that.
I, I, I would recommend to pull that particular, I'm just not comfortable in voting yes in that fashion until verbiage is, is modified.
I understand, I got that.
So, you're asking to pull and vote on 3101 individually?
Yes.
Do you want to vote on it individually, or are you asking to pull for next month?
Or pull for next?
Yeah.
I think you.
Pull for next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you'd be voting on the group of pol, voting on the group of policies minus 3101?
Okay, yep.
Mr. Chairman.
So, you're saying that the changes would be made in the regulations, and not necessarily the policy?
Right, the policy, as, as it's written and presented, will stand, it'll just, the regulation will come back and specify, clarify, because as those, the stipulations change over who can and who can't.
Right.
We don't always come back and adjust the policy, we make the adjustment to the regulation.
Right.
Because things are always changing, and if it's addressed in the regulation, then the superintendent and her staff and her cabinet can make those adjustments without it having to come to the board for, for two formal readings.
I, I guess where, because I see the policy on the community college side, and the verbiage is like, real direct, and it's the directness that I see on the community college side, I don't see it on this side, so that's where I'm struggling, because once again, if that policy is voted upon, and someone, you know, a parent looks at it, they're going to feel like their child in the ninth to 10th grade can take that class, and I just know that that not to be true.
Right. So, does the policy, when you say the regulations, and I understand what Jamie's saying, I agree, but does the policy, does the verbiage say, pending what the regulations, and as you just said, regulations could change yearly?
The policy doesn't say that, but the regulation that will be attached to that would, would stay updated.
Would say that.
It would, you would, in the manual, you'll see the policy, and then following that policy will be.
Okay.
3101 dash R, it will be the regulation, so they'll always be associated.
So, Jamie, what you're asking is to pull ninth and 10th grade, the language that says ninth and 10th grade, I'm just trying to get an understanding.
The, the ninth and 10th grade is not the issue.
Okay.
It's the parameters in which ninth and 10th graders can take it.
Okay.
Because all ninth and 10th graders are not going to be standard, you know, the policy of the community college side has specific language that lets us know which ninth and 10th grader can take it.
Okay.
And when I look at the policy on our side, board side, it doesn't reflect that.
Okay.
And so, for me, as a parent, that's making some decisions for my child, I'm going to be under pressure that my child can take college classes in ninth and 10th grade, based on the current wording.
Right.
So, my understanding is you're just looking for some clarifying language to make it clear.
Right.
That, that's eligible to sign, ninth and 10th graders.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get to, so basically, some clarif, clarification in the language for ninth and 10th graders, so is that correct?
Yes, so I think he wants to pull it, have that language added to it, and then re-vote on it next month.
Right, I just want to make sure that what Jamie's asking is, is everybody on the same page, is clarification for what ninth and 10th graders could take college classes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But will that regulation document be ready by next month? If we pull it, if we pull it tonight, will the regulations document be ready by then?
I can have it.
I also think that you can add the language saying, can't, per current reg, regulations, like just having that statement in there along with the ni, like, current ninth and 10th graders, per current regulations, may be able to, it's just a matter of just semantics, adding those words.
Semantics, yeah.
And then that doesn't matter whether it changes from one year to the next, it says may and per regulations.
Okay.
Yep, I'm sure.
All right, I'm good with that, is everybody okay with that?
All right.
Any other discussion on any of the policies?
So, based on our conversation that we just had about the school calendar, I can't remember the exact wording for the school calendar, 3300 policy, is there anything in that that might change based on how our decision goes with the school calendar?
No, I, I don't know.
I'm sure, I, I can take a look at it, but I'm almost sure that it tracks the legislation that you have a policy.
I'm sure it does, and that's what we're doing, and we're not going against that, so it should be fine.
You, you think we're safe to move?
You want to pull it just to be on the safe side until next meeting?
Yes.
To give Rachel time to, I, I feel like it's just going to echo what the general statute says, but.
I was going to say, it's, it's got, by general statute, because the School Boards Association sent it, and we are not, not following that, so.
Right. You want to pull it to be on the safe side, Kathy?
I'd like to hear what the rest of the board feels about that.
I, I would say yes, just because we want to make sure that we're accurate, and, you know, we, we don't want to go on speculation, no offense, but if, if we're uncertain at this time, I think we need to pull it.
Actually, pull it.
Any other discussion on any of the policies?
I can take one second, John.
Okay.
3300.
Which one?
It's on the other side.
Okay. Yeah, I would say yank that one, John, just have the chance to look at it.
Okay, all right.
Just to make sure that what you're doing doesn't conflict in any way.
So, if there's no more discussion, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended, and the amend, amendment is pulling 3101 dual enrollment, and pulling 3300 school calendar in time for learning.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand, motion carries, thank you.
As for item 7.4, Mr. Chairman, since we have made adjustments to the policies that were adopted, we need to move 7.4 to next month, because I need to go in and clean it up, so that we don't pull out policies.
I was, I was just getting ready to ask that, we don't want to pull out a pol, a pull a policy tonight that could affect the two that we just pulled, so. Okay, so, for 7.4, we'll move, we'll just move that to our March meeting.
Okay. For item 7.5, we are seeking to renumber this policy, policy 6112, rather than renaming it, we're just going to renumber it, or rather than removing it, excuse me, we are going to renumber it and put it in the 6,000 series in the manual, and that will need action as well, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion on that?
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand, and motion carries, thank you.
Item 7.6, my last item, Mr. Chairman, asking the board to consider for first reading policy 3530, which was one of the policies that we pulled last month, we made some edits, and it's brought back to you, so just asking you to consider that first read tonight.
All right, so again, that's 3530, this is first reading. Any discussion on that tonight? It'll come back up at our March meeting for second reading and approval. All right, I've, any discussion, if not, all right, we'll move on, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, 7.7, this is discussion and selection of Pamlico Community College Board of Trustees member, so, the end of last week, there was some email discussion going along, and some, some very good ideas and points as far as how, what is our policy or procedure, and, like, we talked about it before the meeting, really, in the past, we've had someone that has been recommended, and the board would discuss it and vote. Tonight, I'm open to, if, if we want to discuss a policy on how we do that, I think right now, we have two candidates, and I've, I'm going to throw out the idea of calling a special meeting for next Monday at 6:00, and we've got the two candidates who are interested in filling this position, and, you know, I would like, maybe they could submit a, just a one-page essay of, of why they would like to serve as a community college board of trustee member on behalf of the Board of Education. I'd ask for that essay by this Friday, that I could then circulate to all the board members to have before next Monday, and then I'd like for each board member to submit a question that they would have for the candidate, and, and what we would do, this would be an open meeting, a special called open meeting, where we would invite the two candidates to come, we would have had time to read their essay, and then, I'd like for each board member to, to really think through and, and have a question to ask these candidates, and then at the conclusion of that, we could then feel better informed and, and vote on who we would like the, the person to fill that position, so I'm throwing that out there as a, you, we can use this time, and then we can, if we like how that procedure works, we can continue to do that way, and by all means, we could develop a policy for our policy manual on how the Board of Education will choose its community college members, and we can add another one in our policy manual. Is there, I'm, I see shaking heads, I see some people looking down, is everyone okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
So, what we would do then is have a special meeting next Monday at 6:00, and I would ask Ms. Jackson, if you can contact the two candidates, and they can, they can submit their, I don't really like calling it essay, but I don't know what a word to call it, this is why I want to, this is why I would like to, to be your candidate, to serve on the Community College Board of Trustees.
Letter of intent.
Letter of intent, I like that, that's what I was trying to think of. So, a letter of intent, and then by Friday, then I can circulate that to all the board members, and I would ask if, if you could send your question to me, and then I could circulate that to all the board members as well, to make sure, because some of you might come up with the same question, and I'd, I'd like for us all to have at least, you know, seven good questions to ask. Ms. Dunbar?
I have a conflict with next Monday night, the 13th, is there another possibility for an optional special meeting night, the 20th, or, when do we have to submit that?
Well, they have asked, have they asked to have somebody in place by April, Ms. Jackson?
Well, there's a. There's a orientation that they would like the person to attend in March, that's one of the options, so the sooner the better for them.
Right.
Because it's been vacant since April.
Would the 14th work?
No, that's Valentine's Day.
That's Valentine's.
That's, oh, okay. Will the 15th work?
That would work for me, but.
Would we have a description of the board of trustees, John?
We can get one, we can get one from the community college. Can you help us on that, Jamie?
I'm sorry.
Or, if we could, does the, see if the community college has a description of what they look for in a candidate to fill a community college board of trustees position?
I'm sure, I can check for us.
Okay.
Because one of the things I was going to suggest is, once we go through this sequence, and see if it works or not, making sure that we notify the college to make sure they understand what the new process and policy is for the future.
Yeah.
The, the 15th would be much better for me, if it, if it would work for the rest of the board.
15th work?
Yeah, it's good with me.
I'll check.
Okay. Mr. McCotter?
What day?
Wednesday of next week, the 15th.
At 1800?
Yep.
Very good.
All right. All right, so if, so we'll have to send out, do the notice and everything, and if, if we can just send the email to all of us, just as a reminder, but, so by this Friday, a letter of intent from the two candidates, and, and also by this Friday, if everyone could submit a question, that then I can circulate to everyone, so we make sure we've got seven questions that we can ask. So, Ms. Jackson, are you sending, you're sending the request to them?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, hearing none, Mr. Dudley, it's time for you.
We don't have to do that.
We don't have to do that.
We do know.
Thank you for catching that, though, this is the first month, we don't have to do it, but thank you.
Yep.
Red?
Yes, sir.
I moved that the Pamlico County Board of Education entered into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in NC General Statute 143. I moved at the Pamlico County Board of Education into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in N C General Statute one-four-three dash three-eighteen point one-one A one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty U S C one-two-three-two G and G S one-fifteen C dash four-two. Confidential personnel matters as provided in N C G S one-four-three dash three-eighteen point one-one A one, five and six, and one-fifteen C dash three-nineteen and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute one-four-three dash three-eighteen point one-one A three.
Have a motion, need a second? Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Alright, we'll be going into closed session at eight-ten. Thank you to those who did a lot of hard work and great presentations tonight.
One. One. One, one, one. One, one, one.
Okay, we're back in open session. I need a motion to approve the personnel report for action as presented in closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. I need a motion to approve the amended safety plan discussed in closed session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor, raise your right hand. You see the dates that are listed. Also remember our special meeting that we're gonna have on the 15th, next Wednesday at six. With all that being said, need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. We are